Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. Is BJ on the air, Tom?
Yes, BJ, you there? All right.
Good morning.
Morning.
From there, I will go for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes of May 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 10th, 2017.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now is approval of claims for payment totaling $212,620.45.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, I have is the approval of the 2017 health insurance rates. And I need this entire thing read off, two motions.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the health insurance premiums for fiscal year 2017-18 to be set with a 15% increase. The Alliance Select Plan would be for a single, $721.59; family, $2,191.56; and a two-person, $1,374.77. Can I just read the totals instead? Or do you need me to read the dental and the life and all that?
I just told the whole thing.
Okay, the whole thing. Okay, the dental for single, under the plan, is $3214; family, $9922; two-person, $60.09. The life insurance under the same plan, the single, well, single-family and two-person is $3.35 because it's on the employee only. So, the total for the single, under the Alliance Select Plan, is $757.08. The family is $2,294.13; and the two-person is $1,438.21 for the two-person. Under the Alliance Select Plan, with the $1,250 and $2,500 deductible, the single health insurance plan is $721.59; the family is $2,191.56; the two-person is $1,0374.77. For the dental plan for a single, it's $32.14; the family is $99.22; the two-person is $60.09; and the life for a single-family and two-person is $3.35 again, for totals of, for the single plan, $757.08; the family plan, $2,294.13; and the two-person policy is $1,438.21. And then, for the Blue Advantage Plan, which has $750.150 deductibles, the single health plan is $656.60; the family is $1,992.33; and the two-person is $1,249.77. The dental, again, for single, is $3214; family, $99.22; and the two-person is $60.09. And again, the life insurance is $3.35 for each of the plans, for the employee only, making totals of $692.9 for the single plan, $2,094.90 for the family plan, and $1,313.21 for the two-person plan. The employee, oh, okay.
I need a second on that motion.
I will second that motion, Lynn.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have the non-
Okay, and then this will be the employee insurance contribution rates for the-
For the non-employee insurance.
Oh. Okay, non-employee insurance contribution.
Non-union.
Non-union, okay. Non-union employee insurance contribution rates. The single for the Blue Advantage Plan is $41.32; the two-person is $78.59; and the family is $125.49. Under the Alliance Select Plans, both of those plans, the single is $106.31; the two-person is $203.59; and for the family plan contribution, it's $324.72. Yes, those are all figures per month. So, I would make a motion to approve those.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is Item 11, fireworks permit application.
Okay, you have that out?
I had it somewhere.
Yeah, I did too.
Right here.
Okay, we have fireworks permit application.
Oops, that's why I'm off.
For the Jensen family, Fourth of July celebration. They have not had training, but have had several years' experience shooting off fireworks. They will have medical treatment available; and the other boxes are also checked, yes, that they will have all the other precautions available for their display. So, I will make a motion to approve the fireworks permit application for Jensen family, Fourth of July celebration.
I will second the fireworks permit application for the Jensen family, Fourth of July celebration.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? It's July 1st, rain date of July 2nd; and if there is a burn ban going on, this permit is void.
Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I got out of order there. I need to go back up to Item Number 7, which is a change of status. Secondary roads.
Okay, we have a change of status I would make a motion to approve for Samuel Schindler. He was hired as a seasonal laborer at $10 an hour, effective May 22nd. And-
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
The last day of work will be December 31st, 17.
Any other discussion?
Oh, just for the summer, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and then we have another employee change of status for him. I would make a motion to approve, and that's for Skylar Clark. He is a secondary roads laborer, position $12 an hour; and he is transferring to the IRVM department.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Skylar Clark for the IVRM.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
He was also temporary seasonal part-time.
You want me to explain a little more on that?
You can.
Where he was under the IRVM department, but then we kept him on for the winter, since that was a seasonal position. So, secondary roads took him over, we used him; and that position was budgeted to become full-time. So, I'm moving him back to IRVM.
Okay.
To that position.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a change of status at IRVM department.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Skylar Clark. He will now be full-time at the roadside vegetation management technician, at $15 an hour.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is a change of status Sheriff's Department.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the employee change of status for Rodney Stoner. He's a lieutenant at the sheriff's office. He is, he was a full-time employee, and he's retiring. His dates of employment were May 1st, 1981; and his last day will be May 12th, or was May 12th of 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve Deputy Stoner's retirement.
I had a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I want to thank Rod Stoner for all of his years of service. He's been a great asset to that department, and wishing the best in retirement.
Absolutely, I mean, he's got a long career and a very tough occupation with very little gratitude someday, so I hope he enjoys his retirement. We can try to find somebody to step into those big shoes, but they're going to be hard to fill.
Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item Number 12 is an appointment to Steamboat Rock Library Board. I do not have any information on this at this time, so... I would look at table in this.
You didn't get the email on Vicky Hutchcraft?
No, I don't think I did. Do you have it?
Yeah, I received an email from someone at the city of Steamboat Rock or the library. Did you get that, Nancy?
Yes, I sent it to Rick.
Okay, okay.
Well, then I have it.
Okay, they do have a position on the Steamboat Rock Library Board that is a, it's a non-resident board member position, and that's what this position is that's up for reappointment. And their recommendation was to reappoint Vicky Hutchcraft, or to appoint Vicky Hutchcraft for the six-year term, going from July 1st of 17 to June 30th of 2023. So, I would make a motion to approve the appointment of Vicky Hutchcraft. The library board has already, well, I'll leave it at that right now and leave that for discussion. So, make the motion to approve her appointment.
I'll second the motion to approve Vicky Hutchcraft to Steamboat Rock Library.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, the city council, I believe, has already approved the appointment of Vicky, and it's just that it's also required to be approved by the Board of Supervisors.
I did talk to her a little bit, and this is kind of a Rick question. It's a city library, and in their bylaws, they say the supervisors need to appoint after the city council does.
Or approve it.
Or approve it. Is this common? I mean, this is for someone who approved this one.
I don't know if that's what they have in the bylaws, if that follows the bylaws.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Did you forget number 10?
Probably. Yep, I skipped number 10 again. I got too many scratches on that.
That would hurt.
Number 10, approval of wellness program.
Does anybody want to, do we need to explain that, or? I'll make a motion to approve the wellness program that was for the employees for next fiscal year. For right now, I'll just leave it at that, I guess.
I'll second the motion to approve the wellness program through Rock Valley.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Kelly, you were in part of this, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about it or not? We went through this a couple of weeks ago with Rock Valley.
We are kind of increasing the program a little bit to, they have the various stages, and we are increasing our program from the run program, or the walk program to the run program. So, there are a few additional benefits to the employees there as far as wellness, the wellness goes.
And in the end, we want the health better.
Right, we're trying to improve the, right. Like Lynn says, we're trying to improve the health of the employees to hopefully be able to see a reduction in the cost of the life insurance rates.
Any other discussion?
Or health insurance rates.
Hearing no more, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I think I'm back on track, number 13, which is fiscal year 18, Friendship Club funding agreement with CICS. Lynn, did you want to talk on this?
Just to kind of explain, this is the agreement we've had in previous years. There's been just a few small changes to the contract template, and it basically, you know, we pay for our Friendship Club out of the general fund, but then it's billed back. So, they approved this budget amount, we'll just receive 112 of it. So, basically, you know, inside the general fund, we can haul that back, aim it from the region, and the cost of the Friendship Club. And we can bill it to them.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 18 Friendship Club funding agreement with CICS.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permits.
Do you want to read the utility permits there, BJ?
I don't have the recent list in front of me, pardon.
I know. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the utility permit 5-17-17A. It's by Interstate Power and Light Company for the purpose of installing poles, a conductor, and anchors for a new one-phase overhead primary line starting on County Highway S-27, south of State Highway 175, and heading south on S-27 on the west side of the road, located in Section 32 of Sherman Township.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, permit 5-17-17B. So, I'll make a motion to approve the Harden County Utility Permit Application by Interstate Power and Light Company for the purpose of constructing a new three-phase overhead and one-phase underground electric lines to replace the existing lines along 125th Street and D Avenue, west of Alden. It's located in Sections 10, 11, 13, 14, and 15 in Alden Township.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Secondary roads.
Yeah, the federal aid agreement.
Yeah, that's after the secondary roads. I don't know if you had anything for roads yet. I know I bounced around around enough already.
Confusing me.
Okay, number 15, federal aid agreement for City Highway Bridge Program Project. I would DOT agreement number 117 HBPS 014.
I'll make a motion to approve the federal aid agreement for City Highway Bridge Project. I would DOT agreement number 1-17-H. This is Henry B. and Boyd P. and Paul, F. and Sam, 014.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
It's for the bridge in Alden. It's a federal aid agreement for the bridge in Alden.
Okay.
With the city, to use city bridge funds for that, for the federal. Instead of coming out of county bridge funds, it'd be out of the city bridge.
City bridge funds.
Oh, all right.
Any other discussion?
We'll have to have a 2018 agreement after they sign this later, between us and the city, and then that'll be sent, that's the next one.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, I have is set a date for discussing action on 310th Street, Honey Creek Road.
Just so I can get a letter out to the property owners along that road, so they can come and voice their opinions or write in. I just would like to have a date, you know, set by the board.
June.
Yeah, let's put it out there, June or early July. You know, give them plenty of notice.
June 21st, Darryl?
21st or 28th?
Sure. 28th might be better. The more notice, the better.
So, you want to make-
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to set the date for June 28th to have, how about on 1:00 PM?
I think we can do it at the regular board meeting. We can just do it at the regular board meeting.
Okay, so, at the regular board meeting on June 28th, 2017, to discuss action on the 310th Street, Honey Creek, Turf Road project.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have Item Number 17, which is possible closed session on real estate offer as allowed under Iowa Code Section 21.5J. Rick, you looked at this, and we don't apply, correct?
Not too much arguments.
I agree with him.
You can know Darryl's legal opinion. Mine is, I just don't-
Well, they don't take my engineering opinion to the public or something.
I don't think it's applicable. I think that it had to be discussed, and, you know, it's my understanding there's some interest by the engineer's office to acquire a building in Eldora, not for use as an office or for cold storage. And if that is what the supervisor wants to do, my recommendation would be to just authorize that Darryl and myself to approach the owners and see if a sales price can be negotiated, subject to approval of the supervisor. So, I think that'd be the easiest way to proceed, if that's what the county is interested in doing.
Okay, I had reached out, talked to Bob earlier, Jesky. I know this is a building that the city was interested in as well. Would you like to speak at all, or?
No, at this point, we're just requesting that to table this for at least a week, and give the city a chance to get their things in order to see if they are really interested in this. I guess that's about all I can say at this point.
Okay. Mel?
Well, I guess I would echo Bob's comments. The city's, it's kind of been widely publicized also. The city's interested, and we have a meeting Monday night, the 22nd. That's also on our agenda, all of this, you know, figuring this out. And so, I guess we would respectfully ask, you know, that would be a consideration, that we could have an opportunity to meet on Monday night. We were kind of bringing it to a close, you know, as far as our discussions and gathering information and that type of thing.
And we don't want to undercut or go behind anybody's back on this. That's-
Okay.
Well, I think you need to explain a little more. Our position is that we know that time is of the essence and stuff. And what I was looking at is just the price of that cold storage. For now, we have two outlying sheds that we're not using actively. It's just storage, and we can give those back, and it would be more efficient for us. And I looked at this as a temporary solution that would give the city time, you know, to plan it, and if they wanted, then we'd sell it to the city. But, just from kind of following in the paper, it's been eight months, 10 months, and the city hasn't moved yet, so I figured you'd need more time. You know, and the deal's got to be done because of the transfer, different company, you know, so. I'd like to see us moving along. I mean, we don't have to make the offer before next week, but, you know, how will we know what the city's position is?
Well, if I could add, I think, and Bob can too, but actually, for the tri-rins, for the building, the property, you mentioned the location, it really has been not quite eight months. The discussion actually kind of just really came back to the surface probably in the last, I want to say, three to four months, perhaps. We've had a couple of meetings out there, and so, but our needs are really more immediate, you know, for part of what we're thinking about. So, it would be something that the city has an immediate need for, and would be able to, if that's how it plays out, and that decision will be made, I think, very soon, because we also are on that same timeframe. You know, we know that we have to do something probably in the next, you know, week or two, because that's, because of the possible merger.
But do you think a decision we made Monday night?
Well, I think it's going to get real close, Rick, Monday night, because we are, we're, a couple of different options are kind of intersecting. We've been moving on parallel fronts, and there's probably an intersection of those two options that are going to come together, certainly before the end of May.
Well, it'd be my recommendation to the supervisors to either authorize negotiations to commence on next Tuesday, or just table it until Wednesday, and then act on, you know, act on that, I think, is, you know, would be my recommendation, if you want to give it time, you know, certainly give it a couple of weeks. But, you know, it appears that a decision is imminent, and, you know, the city isn't interested in it, you know, the county should be able to pursue, and without putting undue pressure on the city. But, you know, from the comments, it sounds like we're going to take some kind of action on Monday, and they should be able to, you know, seal it up on Monday, perhaps. I don't know for sure.
What is the status of the current owner? I mean, I understand there's going to be a merger. How soon is that taking place, that they need to get this done?
I don't know the exact date, but I know it's coming soon.
Sometime, I think, in June. That's what we're hearing. We haven't had the exact date either, maybe you guys have it. But, I think it's, the negotiations on some of that'll start in June, and I'm sure they'd like to have it wrapped up, I heard, by October. But, that's to end it, so they need to know prior to that, probably, what assets they own, what assets they don't own, and that type of thing. So, I'm guessing in the next, yeah.
Rick, would it be appropriate for us to authorize Darryl to proceed pending the decision made by the city council on Monday night? So that we can, I mean, it's going to take time for the paperwork, for the transfer and everything, but if he could proceed so that at least they know, the company would know, that something is definitely going to be done, whether it be by the city or by us?
Well, I think that-
Is that a possibility?
Well, it is. I think that, you know, certainly, certain negotiations, you know, could complicate a sale to the city, I think, from a realistic standpoint. If the negotiations were that there was an offer in excess of $125,000, and they would, and the county's willing to pay, let's say, whatever, an amount higher than that, and then that puts the city in a, you know, in an awkward position, because you basically negotiated the sale at a higher price than they offered to the city. So, it just depends how the county wants to handle this from a diplomatic, you know, standpoint. If you want to give them till next, you know, Monday to see where they're at, if you want to, you know, have Darryl do the negotiating. This is kind of getting you on a legal, and so, it's really what the supervisors are comfortable with.
What do you think, BJ?
Well, just a second here. I believe that the building itself lends itself to being great cold storage. You know, I would like to give the city of Eldora the chance to look into this. But I see, you know, if they decide not to pursue this, this is a huge savings for every Harden County taxpayer in the terms of consolidating services, and bringing in that Garden City Shop, the Actley Shop, and maybe liquidating those assets in those two communities to offset this purchase. So, I see the fiscal side, but also having the centrally-located facility that for our needs, it meets it today. And looking at the city's needs and following the dialogue that they've had, it would take some considerable work and investment from the city. So, I'd like to pursue it as quickly- So I'd like to pursue it as quickly as possible and I appreciate the fact that United Suppliers has been willing to, you know, put the same type of offer on the table for us as well. But looking at square foot price for a cold storage, where it's pretty much move-in ready with, you know, for cold storage, it's a, it's a bargain for cold storage. I don't know what kind of a bargain it is to put a fire or EMS or combined emergency services facility in it, so, but I think if we give them till next week and then we pursue it in good faith, I think we'd be doing every taxpayer in Harden County a favor.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I don't think there's any, you know, real downside if there's at least some, some follow-up from today's meeting with authorization, authorization from the board, for the, myself, for Daryl, to at least contact the power to be and just let them know the matter's been discussed, we're providing as courtesy, you know, window of opportunity to the, to the city and that, you know, we would, we would like to pursue purchase if it doesn't appear as though the city's going to exercise their, their option or their ability to purchase a property.
Sure. So I guess, I, I'd make a motion to give the authority to Daryl Albertson and Rick Dunn to pursue a real estate offer. Let's look at the date here. May twenty-third with the property owners of the tri-rents facility.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Could I, could I have a couple of questions, or, just a question for Daryl?
Aye, go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, I just, you mentioned it was temporary, so what kind of a timeframe are you looking at that would be temporary?
What, what I was looking at was getting rid of those two buildings, then being able to move quite a bit of our IRVM facility down to there, some of all of our extra stuff, we're short on storage. Then we had talked about selling the engineer's office and the shop is already set up with utilities, fiber, connect to our network, so then with the freed up space, convert that to office space.
That'd be your existing shop, not what you want.
Right.
Or you would be.
Up there.
Right.
Yeah, not this.
Right.
No permanent plans, I guess. Unless the city didn't want it, then how can I beat it, you know, for cold storage? And then selling our office and then, in that timeframe, building a suitable facility, truck shed, et cetera, out there, and then using the existing sheds that we have as our storage then, because they're not in the best of shape, you know.
So that's a timeframe of how long? I guess, I, I just was curious, so we kind of had an idea, you know, when we discussed it, because our needs for the, I mean, everything BJ said is true for the city too, the savings to the taxpayers to combine EMS and fire department, you know, fit a great building, saving the taxpayers also of the city, but really it does affect the entire county too, and it, and it's centrally located, hard surface road, and our needs are immediate, so there's a, you know, quite a few that feel that, like I said, everything he said would make sense for us.
Sure.
But ours would be a permanent, you know, solution to three departments, it also will help the PD move over to the fire department, possibly, I mean, that's the school of thought.
Okay.
So three departments, you know, would be, would be helped and the taxpayers would be saved. So, I was just wanting to know, because we, we can't wait five years.
When I, when I was looking at it, you know, you know, and I don't know if the fire department's already outgrowing, I know they're getting close and they, they've been getting close since I was on council, you know, and, you know, with EMS, you know, how soon that's going to be done, are they going to be housed together, or whatever, however that comes, but you're still going to have to go through all your design phases and everything, you know.
We're working on it now.
How are you going to pay, pay for it, you know, that type of thing?
Right.
Are you going to bond for it, is the public going to say yes, or are they going to say no, type of thing? So, you know, I thought two to three years, it probably would be all that we'd really need it for. And I, I honestly didn't think it'd get done before that, maybe it will. I've been shocked before by things, but I've learned how things move, they go kind of slow, so.
Well, we have drawings, I mean, we're working right now with architects, and we're, have things, you know, lined up.
Sure.
And again, there's no, I'm not here, you know, Bob is absolutely correct, but we do need to have a meeting and discuss it and kind of come to a head on this type of thing.
Yeah.
It's been moving quicker in the last month.
Well, and this might have helped it along.
Oh, I think it did.
Yeah, because we haven't really been discussing this for very long at all, meaning we've made a decision.
Maybe we're tired reading about the paper, we want you to get going.
Well, yeah, well, exactly. Well, I know because there was kind of news to me today, so I'm like, well, I, maybe other people have discussed it, but it was news to, so, you know, that's why obviously I'm here too.
For, for the last couple of years, we've been looking at putting up a cold storage shed, and from what I remember, how many dollars was that?
I don't, it's.
This is less than ten cents on the dollar for.
It's.
And, and it's an opportunity that if you don't enterprise on it, it saves taxpayers' money.
Right.
As well. We don't want to under, undermine you by any means, but we don't want this deal to go off the table either.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're both in the same boat, and I think feel the same way, so it's all good either way, but for the taxpayers in the end, I think, in my opinion.
But, I think the disadvantage is, is, is more public property than, you know, we've got enough public property already and, and the taxes are, you know, what, fourteen thousand dollars a year on that piece of property, and by either the city or us taking it, that's fourteen thousand dollars a year, not going to taxes, you know. So, so I think my long-term plan was to try to get out of it, you know, it'd be great if it could go back into private hands, just like we're trying to do with the engineer's offices, get it, you know, that was the original intent, try to get that back into private hands. Our, our public footprint is, is, seems to be fairly large, you know, and it just seems like we keep taking private ground away, but, but my thinking was if the city's going to do it, then they must not care too much, I'll do it, so. I mean, but, that's.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other, just?
How, you know, for us to hold off, how do we know whether we should make an offer or not? Are you, as a, are you going to have Bob come and tell us, we want it, stay out of it, or?
I can give you a decision.
Okay.
Tuesday, probably, or, ah, can't wait to next.
Yeah, or, or Wednesday if you want to do it, we can put it on the agenda for next week.
Well, that's not the motion on the floor. Motion on the floor is Tuesday, you guys can start pursuing, whether you want to hold off another day, that's up to you.
Yeah, I would hold off another day and let Bob come to the board meeting forward, I think, wouldn't you, Rick?
It's just, I mean, if you're going to do that, I'd just table it to next, Wednesday. And take the action now, don't you think?
Sure.
I mean, you, you can go with that motion BJ, you can modify it to Wednesday.
I'll, I'll resend my motion and we'll just, you know, take no action today and we'll find out Tuesday if we need to add some type of item to next week's agenda.
Uh, we're in the discussion with a second. Do you just want to vote the motion down and then table till next week?
Yeah, just call for the vote, Lynn.
Okay. All in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries, or motion fails, excuse me. Uh, now, possible action to?
Motion to table the discussion on the real estate till next Wednesday's meeting.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion's tabled. From there, is there any other business? Bob?
Just out of curiosity, there's, there's new fireworks, I mean, you had just passed a fireworks permit, and I just, is, is the law going to change where everybody can have fireworks without a permit now, or what's, what's the board's, what is the county doing?
My understanding is you can, you can buy them, you still need a permit to light them off, is that correct?
I don't think that's accurate.
Okay.
That's not accurate.
No, that's not accurate. You buy firecrackers, you can blow them off unless they, you can, you can acquire those fireworks and, but the city and the, and the county can take action to make it illegal to, to fire those, but I don't think that's going to be likely in most, in his palates, but there's certainly, certainly going to be issues that'll have to be discussed, you know, do you allow them at the fairgrounds, do you allow them in parks, do you allow them in county parks, so there's going to have to be some action, action by the county. Now, now how that affects these, these applications for permits for that, for maybe fireworks that are beyond what's, what's allowed for sale, I still think there's some questions that need to be, need to be answered.
Okay.
You guys underneath, business, other business?
We're in other business, yeah.
Can I get a timeline on V Avenue as far as finishing up the ditches?
For me? I don't think so. Daryl, you got an idea?
We're hoping for some dry weather, you know.
Because Three Miles has turned into a three-year project and.
Yep.
I'm, ruined my horse machine again, I'd like to get a furnace in the house. It's hard to live with three foot of water in your basement.
I don't, I don't think the road's causing water in your basement.
But, it's a drainage issue. You guys are like twelve hundred feet from my driveway, you guys just get past my driveway. I'm the last one on that road, it would help me out immensely, digging ditches. If I got water in my north ditch, I got water in my basement. I don't ever have any water in my south ditch.
You're the last place up on the east side?
Yes.
I think the last time I was there, I didn't see any type of gutters or downspouts on either.
I get water in my, my ditch, it goes right down to my basement. Yeah, where am I going to drain it? My closest, if I was to have gutters on there, I drain it to that ditch, it's just going to do a circle.
Well, maybe we could probably try to get a timeline together, I, I can't answer that question, I'm not the road department.
It's wet, sloppy, and you have heavy traffic.
Yes.
Of which is not your fault.
No, but what you guys have done to the first two miles has helped, it's been decent, but every time you guys dig the ditches out, add to the top, it's, it's rough there for a year.
Yeah.
I'm dealing with that, that Jim Cleveland's, but it's going to get better, like the first two miles.
Yeah.
But let's just hurry and get this road healed up and.
Our plan's is to be up there, but it's, we've had rain, rain, so, yeah.
And it is wet there.
Very wet.
I remember we pulled out last year for two reasons, one because it wasn't getting too wet, the other was because we had to do some roof construction and do some intersections.
I just come down from the tax meeting upstairs and they want to increase my property values and if I can't keep a furnace or wash and dry in my basement, I'm not going to allow them to increase my property taxes, that's crazy, so.
Okay, well, let's see if we can get something going here.
Yeah.
I, I'm not guaranteeing whether they're going to get there though.
It's been on, it's been on the plan and it's, it's, and it's a project, when we open it up, it's not something we can just leave, you know, it's got to be something that we can get done, so it's got to be dry, otherwise he's going to be, he's not going to be able to go anywhere, you know, without building another road, so.
Okay.
It'd be nice to be able to keep all that traffic off there too, but.
That won't happen.
Your hands are tied.
Any other business? Hearing no other business, I can ask for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I need two official copies. You take the city board's.
There you go.
This is one.